So it is 6:05 on Tuesday, August 25th. I call this planning committee meeting to order.
Okay, um, Tom Brayley?
Here.
Brenda Moore? Fred Zorco is excused. Uh, Fenobia Dallas?
Here.
Robert Hanley? Yolanda Jones is excused. Jack Nash?
Present.
Um, Floyd Clock?
Here.
And Jim Nightingale is excused. We have a quorum. The next, um, item on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
Move approval, Floyd?
Abort, Brenda.
Have a correction.
Okay.
Uh, page two, um, the motion that is listed, uh, third paragraph down in bold. A motion was made to close the public hearing by Dallas. Can I get my, uh, title?
Yes.
Your full name, please? Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Any other corrections to the minutes? I'll take that as a no. We have a motion to approve and a second. Any other comments?
Do we need to include the corrections or no?
Yep.
I believe that, yeah, okay. Sorry about that.
No.
Go ahead, Mr.
Whichever way, so.
Okay.
To make a mo- make a motion with the corrections, that's fine.
That would be appropriate. So Floyd, you made the motion if you want to do.
I made the motion, so I will move and amend for the correction motion.
I supported it, Brenda.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the corrected minutes and a support. So any other comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Then it's approval of the agenda.
Kathy.
Approval of the agenda is next.
Okay, we have a, a request for approval of the agenda.
Move, Floyd.
Abort, Brenda.
Seconded. All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, now we're onto new business. Um, our first item is case number J 20-0031. It is a special use permit for 310, 30, sorry, 3210 Davenport.
Yeah, I've been communicating here with Scott Dayzac. He's, uh, having some technical difficulties, so he's not able to join us. If I could just give you a brief, uh, outline of it. Um, Dayzac Investments is purchasing the White Pines Library Building located on 3210 Davenport. For game changer therapy services, adding outpatient in-home community occupational therapy, speech therapy, and physical therapy to the children. Uh, the current zoning for that property is RO1 restricted office. The permitted uses, uh, under that allow for professional office and medical facilities. So it would be a type of use that would be permitted, uh, under special approval by the commission. And kind of a review of the. One square feet, uh, given that, uh, our parking standards would require 40 spaces. And, uh, there are 40 spaces on that site. Um, the impact of the, on the neighborhood, the hours of operation, uh, there's a plan open at 8:00 AM and close at 7:00, um, during so normal business hours. So it typically would not impact local residential areas that's directly to the north. And then in addition, um, that parking lot has high privacy expense, uh, based to the residential neighborhood. And you have pictures of that in your packet as well. So, um, staff has no problem with, uh, with granting the approval of the special use permit. Mr. Chairman?
Kathy, if I could just interrupt for a sec, just to remind everybody that if they're not speaking, to mute their microphone, it would help eliminate a lot of the background noise that we, that we hear and help us to hear the people who are speaking.
Does everyone hear, uh, what I, um, my presentation on this project? So Mr. Chairman, we're looking for an, um, a motion to approve the special use permit for game changer therapy at 3210 Davenport.
I move we approve the special use permit, case J 20-00031. Special use permit for game changer therapy services at 3210 Davenport Avenue.
I support, Brenda.
Okay, so we have a motion and a support on the aforementioned adoption of the change. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is case number J 20-0034. Is a West Bank Lofts parking garage to be located at 115 Niagara Street. I believe we have some people here to speak on the project.
Okay, I can, I guess I can start. John Maury with D and M Site. Uh, what is proposed, obviously, the, the Ewalds Bar has been, uh, demoed. The, we are proposing a 9,000 square foot parking facility to, uh, facilitate the condos for hall commercial properties, uh, above Jake's, above, uh, the rest of Court Street there all the way to Hamilton. Um, the 9,000 square feet can accommodate 36 parking spots. We will have a, an eight-inch, uh, storm sewer for interior drainage from the vehicles, uh, that will tap right into the storm sewer on Niagara. And then I, uh, uh, I'm still not sure if the architect has this, uh, facility sprinkled. Um, but the 12, the 10-inch water main is right there on Niagara Street also. Um, the, the site has been 100% impervious for years. Um, phase two of this plan is to demo the Stevens Building. Uh, that's probably a year away though. So they're taking this in some phases. Obviously, the first phase was the demolition of the Ewalds property and construction then of this 9,000 single-story, uh, parking facility for these condos. Um, I don't know if, if our builder, um, Ann Arbor Builders, if Alex is on with us yet. Uh, I didn't see that either one of them chime in. Uh, the architect Bradley Moore, I don't know if he chimed in, uh, to answer any questions about his design.
Um, I'm here by phone.
This is Brad Moore. I've called in by phone. My computer's not cooperating with me.
Okay.
And I, I see that Alex is listed as having logged in on the computer, but I assume he may be having similar issues being able to get the technology to work. Um, my understanding is Alex made a presentation of the building design at the Historic District Commission and it was approved. Um, it occupies most of the site. There's a little impervious area on, on a couple of sides. Um, but I think John's covered everything else adequately.
Brad, can you talk about the structure itself? Single-story brick?
Yeah, it's a single-story brick veneer, uh, concrete block structure. Um, interior, uh, columns and, uh, steel beams and, and lift trusses, um, fairly conventional.
Now, I, I believe that the, uh, ultimate game plan is to, uh, have the building at 110 South Niagara also demoed so that the view, uh, to the river is opened up. Um, I don't know if that's happened yet. Um, if it's, I'd like Alex to answer some of those questions. No, Alex?
That building has, that building has been demolished already.
Oh, okay. All right.
I'm in communication with Alex and he's having technical difficulties, so.
If I can ask Floyd here a question. The Stevens Building, is that the one that was right next to the railroad tracks across Niagara Street from the parking garage? Or is that a different building? You said it was demolished, Kathy? I'm just trying to figure out where that one was.
And now I believe when they're referring to the Stevens Building, that's the building right next to it on the same block.
On the south side?
Yes, on the south side of the Ewalds Building. I believe that's why you call the, you're calling Stevens Building.
Except for it's trying to clear in the view for the river. That's why I'm confused.
Yeah, so we're talking about a couple of different buildings. The one that was demolished to clear the view for the river, it's across the street of Niagara on, right on the river, and it was a whole barn style.
Right.
Building.
Is that the one that's been demolished or it's planning to be demolished in a year?
It already was demolished. So they demolished that building and Ewalds. And then next year they plan to demolish the, it's like a big block building. With many windows. Which is what is called the Stevens Building.
And that one's on the same block to the south of the new parking garage plant.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Is that on the east or west side of Niagara?
West.
The building that will be demolished in a year?
East.
East or west?
East is going to be demolished.
Do I get a second on, do I get a second on east?
The one on the east has already been demolished. The one on the west.
There's several buildings on, on Niagara that were Stevens Buildings from my recollection. But I just want to be clear, that's all.
Okay.
John Maury, Tom Brayley, are there any other comments regarding case number J 20-0034?
I don't, I don't have any unless anybody has any questions.
Any other questions from commission members?
Uh, this is Commissioner Hanley. I have a question of staff. Um, where is engineering on this?
It has been submitted to engineering, but we haven't gotten any initial comments back yet.
Okay, thank you.
So Kathy, this is Brenda. Can we move forward?
Yes.
Though we don't, okay, okay.
Yep, so it's still contingent on engineering's approval.
Right.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve case number J 20-0034. Um, contingent on the engineer's plans.
Support, Hanley.
We have a motion and support on case number J 20-0034, West Bank Lofts Parking Garage at 115 Niagara Street. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, on the new business item C, presentation on the master plan update process and progress of the housing study. Spicer Group and McKenna.
Hi, I'm Alan with Spicer Group, and I will give a short presentation on, uh, the start of the master plan update. And then I will switch gears and have McKenna present the housing plan. So I've got a, a short presentation. Uh, I'll just, um, recapping the, the project and, uh, the next steps. And just, I gotta get some technology here. I gotta share my screen. Um, let's see here. Share my meeting window, I think. Okay, I'm sharing my meeting window. So can everybody see the blue slide that says, uh, master plan update on it?
No.
No?
No.
All right. Bear with me here. I, so, and so Bob, I went to share my meeting window, so I'm gonna stop doing that. And I'm supposed to do share content. There we go. Thanks for your patience, everybody. There we go. That's what we've got. There we go. Do you see the blue slide now?
Yes, now.
Great. Okay. Um. So, uh, back in June, we, um, started working with Bob and Kathy on the update to the, uh, City of Saginaw Master Plan. And our project process includes the following items. Um, it's in the agreement between Spicer Group and, um, the City of Saginaw. We've got a project kickoff. And then, um, also, we wanna, in the project process, we'll do master plan consolidation where we review all your existing plans to account for the goals of those documents and identify any contradictions to be reconciled so we can have a, a clean master plan document that is synchronized with, um, all the other plans the city has adopted. Uh, then, um, another component to the, uh, update is a housing plan. Then a transportation plan. Of course, we'll have public engagement. There's a parking study. We'll also update the Parks and Recreation Plan. We'll get into the nitty-gritty on land use considerations, which will look at, uh, future land use and other policy, um, uh, policies to adopt. And then, uh, we'll move into the final, um, then the final part is to develop the final plan and get that whole public hearing and adoption process going. And one of the features of this, uh, project is that the master plan update was, um, coordinated with a, a grant that the city review, received to financially support the housing plan, transportation plan, and the parking study. And on the next slide, um, if it will work. Okay, bear with me here. There we go, okay. So, so what does that look like in a schedule? So, um, you can kind of see, follow the, uh, the tasks that I just had on the left side in that row. Then we follow through beginning in June. It takes us to oh, about a year out. And you can see here we are in August. We were working with Bob and Kathy on the project kickoff. This meeting here is part of that kickoff. Um, the master plan consolidation is a process to review all the, uh, the documents. Then we have, at the housing plan, and then we're in the transportation plan. So those three or four items we're working on right now. Uh, tonight, after I give this brief intro, um, McKenna will present preliminary findings on the housing plan. There will be some interesting data in there regarding demographics, which will support the overall, um, inventory part of the, uh, update to the master plan in terms of population. It's just a start. The big idea with the housing plan is that it will inform the master plan process as well as the consolidated plan, which is a separate project that's not involved in the master plan. But the reason why the housing plan has, uh, started now is to have the added benefit of digging into the demographic data and then also, uh, to get it done in September so that, uh, it can form the basis for, uh, establishing the next steps for the, uh, the consolidated plan and the five-year consolidated plan. So that's, uh, why McKenna is here today. So, um, waiting anxiously to find out what they've, uh, are gonna present on preliminary findings. Then moving on, um, there's a transportation plan, which will look at various aspects of your road system. Um, considerations for, um, many aspects to motorized and non-motorized transportation. So we just started that. Public engagement will be, uh, a, a big part of this overall project. There's four components to it. Uh, the main one we're, I'm still finalizing is, uh, online engagement. Uh, during the, uh, COVID and other types of, uh, stay-at-home activities. As, as, as you know, we're having meetings online, so we're coming up with a plan to engage the public during, uh, this period. In addition, we'll have a survey that will be available online that addresses land use questions. Then we'll have stakeholder meetings, uh, with identified, um, leaders in, in groups and, um, agency heads in the, uh, the city and ask them direct one-on-one questions. And then we'll have a survey that'll support the recreation plan, which will have parks and recreation oriented questions. And as we move towards the fall, we'll look at the land use considerations. Uh, we will look at existing land use and, and come up with some, uh, exhibits to discuss with the planning commission, with staff, to, uh, take a greater look at the future land use in the city. Part of that will include some redevelopment ready considerations as well. Uh, that's a part of this plan. And then we'll, um, concurrently, we'll work on the Parks and Recreation Plan. And then we'll, uh, finish out the project with the parking study where we look at, uh, parking, the public parking throughout the city. And so that'll get us to, uh, July of next year. And so I, I would like to close out in the short presentation, uh, to tell you a little bit about public engagement. As the previous slide in the schedule showed, there are four components to it. And the current effort, um, in our current effort is, uh, we're working on the online engagement, social media component. This, uh, effort will address distancing while creating awareness of the project and begin the process to receive community feedback. Um, I've talked to Phil Ich, uh, with, uh, the city's, uh, social media coordinator. And our preliminary plan is to host at least four Facebook Live events. Uh, those will be hosted on Facebook and I'm going to develop a plan and submit it to Bob and staff to get their final okay on that. The initial, uh, push will be a number of announcements talking about the plan and the four events. And then, um, we will roll that out. So with that, um, that's what I have. And, um, so I'm ready to transition this to McKenna for their housing study portion. But before we do that, I'm going to hopefully successfully close my screen. And then, um, and then, if there's any questions, I can address those or we can take those at the end after McKenna presents. So let's see here. I closed on my end. All right, I see everybody. Great.
Thanks, Alan. I'm gonna try to open mine up here. Can everyone see? Hang on. Can everyone see that slide that says housing study?
Yes.
Good. Um, I'm going to now move that into full screen mode so you don't, so see the rest of program there. Did it disappear? All right. Back? Okay. Um, thank you, Alan. Uh, as Alan said, uh, myself, Chris Corey, and my colleague Sarah Traxler and Danielle Bouchard, um, we're excited to be here tonight. We're with McKenna. Uh, we were contracted by Spicer to help out with the housing study portion of the master plan project. Um, and I'm gonna walk through some of our findings, uh, from the housing study, uh, some of the things we looked into, um, and also gonna look, talk about some of the implications for the master plan and, uh, why this is important, basically, uh, and, and why, how this should inform the process moving forward. Uh, specifically, what we're gonna look at tonight is, uh, the purpose of the housing study, which we've kind of described. Uh, we'll look at a demographic overview and projections of those demographics, as Alan mentioned. Um, we will look at the existing housing supply. We'll do a supply-demand analysis and an affordability analysis, uh, based on those, that existing supply and the demographics. Um, then I'm gonna turn it over to Danielle briefly to talk about some stakeholder outreach that we did as part of this process. And then, as I said, we're gonna get into the takeaways for the master plan. So what was the purpose of doing this? Um, why is this important for the master plan process and also for the consolidated plan? Uh, we gave a kind of a mission statement. To give direction to the master plan and consolidated plan processes and ensure the recommendations and actions of those documents effectively address housing, neighborhoods, and residential land uses as experienced every day by Saginaw residents. Um, we wanna make sure that, that your master plan, your consolidated plan are actionable, which means you wanna make sure they're grounded in reality. So we wanna understand, uh, the good, the bad, and the ugly about the housing market and how that impacts us going forward. So, in order to do that, first thing we have to do is look at the people, um, of the Saginaw area. And I'll tell you what I mean by Saginaw area in a minute. Uh, because those are the people that need housing, right? And those, that, that forms the demand side of the supply-demand analysis. Uh, so first thing we had to do is establish what we call a trade area, which is just the geographic area for a study like this. Um, and because the housing market does not end at the city limits, we couldn't just use the city of Saginaw, right? That doesn't actually make sense because when people look for housing, uh, they look in Saginaw, they look at Saginaw Township, they look in Buna Vista Township, they, um, they're looking in Kochville Township. They may look all the way across the county in one of the rural townships or in Frankenwood or something like that. Uh, and we know people even look across the border into Bay County or Midland County or other counties. Uh, but we have to draw the line somewhere, and so we did decide, um, a, a, a pretty realistic geographic, uh, area to look at. And also one that's easy to pull data for, uh, is this, is the countywide. Of course, we did look within the county, uh, specifically at the city, uh, in many of our analyses. And then we compare that to the rest of Saginaw County. Um, and that was very important, uh, because that's how we tease out some of the challenges that may face city residents or those looking for housing in the city or the house, city's housing market that other communities may not face. And we can figure out, uh, how to intentionally work in the master plan and consolidated plan to help disadvantaged communities and neighborhoods. Uh, all right, so the baseline population. Uh, as you can see, population has been declining, um, as, and this is not news, um, in the county, in the city uh, since 2010 and in some cases in decades before that. Um, so we're now down in the county to about 192,000, almost 193,000 people. Uh, now McKenna did, as part of this project, uh, we did do a population projection, which I'm gonna show you in a second. But there's a number there that's gonna immediately make you say, oh, wow, uh, we need an explanation of that. So that's on this slide. Our population projection, as you can see, is for population to increase. Now, not particularly fast. Um, we're, we're talking, you know, less than half a percent per year. Um, but we are talking about a, um, the, the, the stabilization of the population decline. Now, why did our numbers show that? Uh, what we did is, or the analysis type that we did is called a cohort component analysis. And the base of that analysis is basically age. So you take 10-year age cohorts, 0 to 10, 11 to 20, 21 to 30, all the way up to, uh, 70 to 80, and then 80 plus. Um, and then as you project into the future, you move them up 10 years in age, right? So the people who are 20 now become 30 in 2030. Um, and then we apply a, uh, the birth rate and the death rate for people of that age group. Uh, so we figure out how many new zero-year-olds there are going to be, or zero through 10-year-olds there's going to be over the next 10 years, that's kids born. And then we subtract out the mortality rate. Uh, additionally, we also apply a migration factor, which. Additionally, we also apply a migration factor, which, you know, just to be realistic, we did apply a negative migration factor that people would move out of the community countywide. But ultimately, the number, what we're looking at, and you'll see a graph on this in a second, is the city of Saginaw actually has a very relatively young population. A lot of people in their teens, twenties, and thirties. And what the analysis projects is that over the next 20 years, those people are going to have kids. So we're talking about in 2030 and 2040 is more kids in town. And that makes populations stabilize and increase a little bit. But notably, and here it is in words on the screen, if you need to catch up. But notably, kids do not demand housing in and of themselves, right? So families need housing. But if a family that today is a young couple and in 10 years is going to be a family with two or three kids, they're still only occupying one housing unit. So ultimately, we'll get into this, but that little bit of population growth isn't necessarily reflected in an increase in demand for housing. Average household size. This one, interestingly, may actually result in an increased demand for housing. And that is that household sizes have been shrinking. Now, that's a national trend. That's not a Saginaw-only thing. In fact, in Saginaw County, the trend has actually been muted compared to other places. But in 2010, the average household size, family, roommates, whatever, was 2.57 people. As of 2018, it was just 2.29. Now, the rate of decrease has started to decline and household sizes are expected to stabilize. And like I said, with the expected increase in number of kids, potentially that would stabilize that household size. But while there are a lot of people in their twenties and thirties, and we anticipate they'll have kids, birth rates are lower than they used to be. And we're probably looking at families of three to four rather than four to five. And so that average household size will continue to be smaller. This is what I mentioned about age. You could see, and I don't know if you can see my mouse or not, but you could see the high number of teenagers, 20-somethings, and those will grow up into childbearing families. And then you also see on the right-hand side of the graph, which is the baby boomers, right, the 50 and 60-year-olds. And that becomes demand for senior housing, which we'll talk about later. Another aspect of housing demand, of course, is income, right? Because people have to pay for housing. And when we get into affordability, that's, the income is going to be a very important measure. What we did is actually took the census, excuse me, income numbers and adjusted them for inflation. So what you're seeing here is income is $20,000. So that when usually when you do an income graph and you see inflation, you see that things kind of steadily rise. When you take out inflation, you could see that incomes really have not increased over the last 20 years. Other things have gotten more expensive. Housing costs have gotten somewhat more expensive although not as much in Saginaw County as they have elsewhere. But incomes really have not increased. And that does provide, that creates struggles for our families and our neighborhoods, because that buying power is less powerful than it was. So now, getting off of the demand side, the people side, and onto the supply side, the housing side, taking a look at the counties and the cities' number of housing units. Since 2010, there really hasn't been a whole lot of change in the number of housing units. It's at 87,000. It's just an increase of 85 on net countywide since 2010. As you could see, there have been a number of housing units, almost 1,500 built in the rest of the county. Demolition in the city has taken out almost as many. And next, you know, we have almost net zero in terms of increased housing over the last 10 years. But, and we'll get into this a little bit more, that doesn't mean that, you know, you say, oh, incomes aren't going up. The number of households really isn't going up. That doesn't mean that there aren't places in the housing market where housing is needed, right? Both geographically and in terms of niches in the housing market, housing segments. And this is one, this demonstrates that pretty well. And that is to say that countywide, in the city, in the rest of the county, the vast, vast, vast majority of housing is single-family detached housing. And that's great. Single-family detached housing is in high demand. It's a great place for families. But it does come with pitfalls, like maintenance costs, like barriers to entry. And therefore, you know, you could see what we call the missing middle of the housing markets, displayed very well in these graphs, that the blue and the yellow bars, the single-family attached, the duplex, those smaller housing units that still allow for a family, big enough for a family and a level of privacy, you could see that those are not well represented in the housing market. Related to that, the number of bedrooms in housing units in the city, or excuse me, in the county, is also really interesting. And that's that over half of housing units countywide have three bedrooms. And that's exactly three. That's not three or more. If you had three or more, you earned up over 55,000, which is well over half. And what that tells me is with housing, with household sizes shrinking, that we're maybe not providing the housing that the housing market needs, right? Again, large housing units are great. They're great for families. They tend to have high value. But if you are a young couple looking for your, looking for housing, if you're a single person looking for housing, and if you're a couple with one child or maybe three roommates, a large housing unit isn't necessarily what you're looking for, and it comes with added costs in terms of maintenance and such. So there may be a mismatch there. In terms of the age of the housing stock, this one really jumped out at us. And that's that 93% of the housing stock in the city of Saginaw is over 50 years old, compared to 16% in the rest of the county. And as we noted earlier, most new construction in the last 10 years is outside of city limits. So even as we talk about, well, there's not a lot of demand, we probably still need to turn over the housing stock. We probably still need new housing, because eventually the maintenance costs on some of these older housing units become problematic. They become an affordability problem. Especially, as I just mentioned earlier, when you have a lot of housing that may be a little larger than some people. Getting into that affordability analysis, and I'll give you some background into how we calculated what is affordable, right? There's a lot of discussion about that. And what is affordable really does differ from family to family, from household to household in terms of income, in terms of other expenses, number of people in the household, et cetera, what type of housing you're looking for. But in order to obtain something objective and, you know, that we can analyze over the entire market, we do have these rules of thumb. And these are nationally-used rules of thumb. HUD uses these. So we define the maximum affordable rent for a given income as 30% of the family's or household's gross income. And maximum affordable mortgage payment as 25% of that gross income. The reason the mortgage payment is less is because homeownership comes with additional costs, of course, taxes, insurance, maintenance. And that's where the extra 5% goes, such that at 25%, you may be burdened. I do want to make it very clear, these are the maximums. Anyone paying above this level is considered to be burdened by their housing costs. So I'm not saying, when we show these numbers in a minute, we're not saying, hey, you make this much money, you could definitely afford this apartment at that rent. We're not saying that. We're saying this is probably the maximum you might be able to pay. And beyond that, you're going to be struggling. So we took a look at rental affordability countywide. And what's very interesting about this chart is how much the number of housing units clusters in the $500 to $1,000 rent range. It's the vast majority of them, over 15,000. But of course, households don't cluster like that in terms of income. They run through the spectrum with the plurality of households making under $25,000 a year. And by our calculations, not, are being burdened by the cost of an apartment or home that costs over $500 a month. So there's a mismatch there. People in higher income brackets, or not even high-income brackets, but even middle-income brackets, are probably looking at housing costs in the Saginaw area, saying, this is no problem. I could afford this apartment, no problem. Everyone I know could afford a apartment, no problem. But there's going to be, there's a group at the bottom of the income scale that is struggling to afford those places. And beyond that, they're competing for those places with people of higher incomes, right, who are coming in and showing a landlord a better credit score, you know, a more stable job. And therefore, that becomes an even bigger housing problem. In terms of for-sale affordability, we actually have, it is very interesting, the opposite situation where you actually have a lot of homes selling for under $100,000, such that it would be theoretically possible for one of these low-income households to afford the monthly payment. But of course, we know that there's barriers to homeownership, simply getting into homeownership, getting a mortgage, getting insurance, paying for maintenance. There's a lot that goes into that. So even if we say, oh, yeah, well theoretically, you could afford the monthly payment. If you can't afford the down payment, you can't get in. You're stuck renting an apartment that may be even more expensive on a monthly basis. So this is a situation we kind of identified in the data that may be something, it's a difficult problem. It can't just be, you know, tackled overnight, but it's something to keep in mind. I also wanted to highlight on this chart, at the bottom of the chart, in the higher income ranges. And this is a situation where you're looking at the number of households in these income ranges is higher than the number of housing units. So you actually are seeing an undersupply. And what you may be seeing here with these higher income ranges is, A, they're competing for mortgages with people in lower income ranges for housing units that the lower-income household could afford, but maybe won't have access to because a higher-income household has come in and they've been able to put more money down, offer more on the house, et cetera. So there's that. There's also the possibility that with the lack of this high-value housing or very high-value housing, these types of households may be seeking housing outside of the county. So there's a couple of issues there at the top of the market in terms of affordability. So now comparing the supply and demand side. The way we do this, the methodology for this has to do with headship and homeownership rates in age groups. So we go back to the data we looked at before in terms of age, in terms of projecting age over the next 20 years to attract the population that way. And we say, how many of these people, based on national and statewide rates, are going to be the head of a household? Which is to say, they're not living with their parents. Which is to say, if they're living with roommates, only one of them, for census purposes, counts as the head of the household. So how many of them are going to individually be in a household? And then of those households, how many are going to own homes? So as you see the three graphs, the three bars here, the blue is the population. The orange is the number of people from that population group that form a household. And then the gray is the homeownership. So again, this is an interesting trend. There are more 20-somethings than 30-somethings or 40-somethings. But because some 20-somethings still live at home or they live with roommates, they're actually not forming households at a high of a rate. There's more households headed by 30 and 40-somethings. And then the households' numbers peaked into 50s and then start to decline again as people move in with their kids or they move in with a sibling or they move into senior housing or something. So that starts to decline again. You can also see homeownership follows a similar pattern. It ramps up from the 20s to the 30s to the 40s to the 50s, then starts to decline as people get older. So we use these numbers, as you can see, this chart actually does use raw numbers, as you can see on the left, they're not percentages. And we use these numbers to actually calculate the number of housing units that will be demanded in the market, both for ownership and for rental. We also then projected those numbers to 2040. So taking a look at our projected households countywide from now, between now and 2040 by age. And again, this is interesting, because right now, you have a nice pyramid. You have 20-somethings, then you have 30-somethings, 40-somethings are higher, 50-somethings are the highest, then 60s, 70s, and 80s go back down. So right now, most, not most, but the highest number of households are headed by someone in their 50s or someone in their 60s, and after that, someone in their 40s. What that means is you're in the prime age groups for homeownership. You're in the prime income years. So right now, we're looking at people looking for housing that are, as a group, looking for homeownership and have money to spend. Now, let's fast forward to the middle bar, which is 2030. And you could see that now, we're not in that nice pyramid anymore. The 30-something group is bigger. The 60 and 70-something groups are bigger. So now, we're talking about people looking for maybe starter homes or looking to trade up from their first home or really just looking for an apartment on one end. And on the other end, we're looking for people who are probably looking to downsize into smaller housing units or looking at senior housing. So that's very different. 2040, we have yet a different trend. Now, we're back to the 40s being the high group, the 60s, 70s, 80s being a high group. And the 80s really take a jump, because this is when the baby boomers hit their 80s en masse. And that group, even with mortality rates applied, not to be morbid, is still going to be much, much larger than it is today. And we'll see in a second that that drives demand for senior housing. It also demands, drives demand for smaller housing units and housing units with less maintenance concern. This is a graph of overall demand over the next 20 years. You could see that for all I was just talking about, age groups changing and the types of housing units that may be demanded changing, demand's going to be flat overall. When you just put it all, add it all up together, the number of housing units demanded now, the number of housing units demanded in 2040 are going to be pretty similar. It is a slight increase, as you can see, from a little under 80,000 to a little over 80,000. But if you think about it, we already have 83,000, 84,000 housing units in the county right now. And that demand line, even as it goes up a little bit, doesn't reach our existing supply line. But I do want to point out on this graph, the bottom, which is the demand for rental, will exceed rental supply. So you may see homeownership units transformed into rental units. And if we want to avoid our existing single-family homes being transitioned to rental, we probably do need to build housing that's designed to be rental at some point to fill that demand. But you can see that the overall demand, as big picture, whole housing market, we're not seeing a lot of growth. And that really does have implications for land use planning. I mentioned senior housing a couple times before. These are the actual numbers we found. We've got about 1,100 senior housing units in the county right now. We are projecting that to jump by 2030 to around 2,000. Again, that is implications for land use planning. As many of you know, senior housing and zoning aren't always fully compatible. They need to be made compatible, and that's something to work on maybe in the master plan, finding sites where senior housing is appropriate within the city and making sure that planning and zoning documents are prepared for that. But I do also want to caution you that that boom is not going to last forever. By 2040, you're just going to see a little bit of an uptick in demand. The jump really does come in the next 10 years. We also did an analysis of starter homes. So we define that as housing units in the for-sale market that are affordable to householders in their 20s and 30s. So first off, we looked at, okay, how many households do we have headed by that age, 20 to 39? As I mentioned earlier, we are going to see an uptick in that group, an uptick in their kids, to 2030. But that's actually going to come back down to below today's levels by 2040. And overall, you're not talking about a huge group increase. You're, you know, in the low 20,000s. And if you look at the median household income in that age group and then apply our affordability calculation, you're looking at a house around $150,000 as their maximum affordable. So it's like, the thought is, what do we have in the housing market that's below that level that's available for sale that could be a starter home? Well, actually, we have quite a bit. And that's in the bottom right corner, there are 37,000 housing units. So our conclusion from this is that if a young couple, a single person wants, is looking for a starter home to buy, get into the homeownership market, the house is there. We talked about the impediments before, depending on income, but the house is there. So not seeing that is necessarily a crunch in the housing market. I'm going to turn it over to Danielle here for a minute or two to talk about some of the stakeholder outreach we did. We did a number of interviews with housing stakeholders throughout the community.
Well, thank you. My name is Danielle Bouchard. I'm an associate planner with McKenna. Just to give you guys a brief background of who I am. As part of this process for the housing study, we conducted several interviews for people that just kind of have boots on the ground in the housing, in the housing market and kind of have anecdotal opinions and comments on the overall housing climate in the city. As you can see, we conducted eight stakeholder interviews. There's a list of the people that we reached out to. If you could please advance the slide, Chris.
Thank you. And here's some of the, quickly, some key conclusions that we've reached as a result of the stakeholder interviews that we conducted. More quality housing is needed for low-income families, seniors, and other specialized groups such as veterans, folks with disabilities. Anecdotally, for the people that I've been able to be in contact with, it seems as though that there's a perception of that, of those affordable developments, the quality tends to be on the lower side. And then they also tend to be in areas where they are perceived as less desirable than others. And that kind of leaves more vulnerable groups in situations where they might find that they might not be in a neighborhood that's best suited for what they need. In general, there are sufficient housing available for first-time homebuyers, which also kind of like... matches very well with the data that Chris just described, that there are people who, you know, are looking for their first time home in the 150 range, maybe younger couples, those types of folks, they do have options in Saginaw County and the city. And another common theme that I heard a lot through these stakeholder interviews is that a lot of these affordable or perceived affordable developments are located in areas that are far from amenities. And I've heard that there were, because the city doesn't have very many grocery stores, like on the east side of the city, that those folks that live in those developments over there don't have access to sufficient public transportation to get to where they might need for large employment centers or grocery stores. And then there's a free bag maximum. So that's just kind of something to keep in mind as we move forward in the master plan process. Another issue that came up quite a bit was absent landlords. That, you know, a bunch of landlords that own property in the city, but maybe live in a different state or that they just aren't very attentive to their properties. That can kind of lead into a lack of rental property maintenance and broken communication between landlords and tenants. And then also I spoke to a couple developers in the area. And one large conclusion to note there is that high construction costs and material costs, as well as cumbersome public financing through different public programs, kind of lead into more issues for developers to build affordable units. Essentially, they can't make the money that they would have to spend to construct them. However, there is a plethora of redevelopment opportunities of old buildings into more affordable units. So that is also an option. And one of the developers that I spoke with said that that's something that he's been looking into a lot more with his company is taking those old historic homes and chopping them up into different units. So that has become more of a affordable process.
Thanks Danielle. With all that kind of summed up, we did want to talk about our key takeaways for the master plan. So all that data and discussion, I think we've kind of boiled down to one slide here. Although in the actual report is getting more in this. But these, I think, are our big takeaways that I think should inform this process. I do acknowledge that some of this comes off a little bit gloomy, right? Well, I think we have found some opportunities. And I think that they could be leveraged through the planning processes that are to come. And also those processes can be used to really help out some of our most disadvantaged residents and neighborhoods. So our key takeaways, as I mentioned, there isn't overall housing demand that's going to increase over the next 20 years based on our analysis. And that means during the planning process, planning for housing growth for housing growth's sake is not necessarily going to be productive. But there's a really big but to that. And that is that there are definitely undersupplied market segments. Senior housing is a big one. That's, there's going to be demand for senior housing. It's going to be built somewhere that may as well be in Saginaw. It may even be, and this is beyond the data's reach, but it may even be an opportunity if you could create quality housing for 55 plus, 65 plus, et cetera, that that becomes an attractor and helps bring in residents who currently live elsewhere because there's a really nice place to live in the city as you go into retirement years. So that's one area. Another area is what we called, what I mentioned, the missing middle of the housing market. Not single family, not large multifamily. That means townhouses, that means duplexes, that means small apartment buildings, three, four, five, six units, maybe up to eight in a building. That means that type of housing unit incorporated into neighborhoods that may be pre-existing neighborhoods. So it's infill, it helps strengthen a neighborhood, it provides a type of housing unit that's not available in the market. Type of housing unit that may be more attainable, both in terms of the monthly cost and also in terms of the maintenance costs and sort of right-sized to the housing, to the household. And the last thing is, and this is a little bit difficult with the lack of overall demand, but I think there's ways to get to it. And that is newer housing in general. We know we have beautiful historic homes in Saginaw. We probably also have some homes that are just old, right? And while those homes are beloved, maybe some of them are beloved family homes and those will stay in that family and be, or be maintained and sold at a profit and that's good and that's all great. Some of those homes are not beloved family homes. Some of them are in the hands of absentee landlords or not, or simply vacant. And so replacing those with newer housing stock, even as demand sort of flatlines, is important. Newer housing stock costs less to maintain, it can provide higher quality, it can provide modern amenities. So that is important and being able to try to incentivize that is going to be crucial. And then there's also a particular oversupplied market segment, right? And if you go out into the township surrounding Saginaw, it's probably what you see being built. And that's these big, single family homes. The data about the population of the county, the populations of cities specifically, but really the whole county, does not suggest that we need more and more and more big family homes. Families aren't that big anymore, families can't afford homes that big. And while we, it's not like we don't need these homes, it's just that they are an oversized portion of the housing market and they end up creating burdensome costs on families that don't need that much space. The next is the master plan process should definitely focus on identifying the sites and incentivizing the investment in these underserved market areas. We really feel like the outcome of this process was that that should be a focus of the master plan. And then, as we look at data, we sometimes have to, we have to aggregate into geographies, right? And while I didn't do a lot in this presentation, the actual report will have some things broken down by census tract. And you could be able to see some differences between neighborhoods. And there are neighborhoods that have specific needs. And you all know that as planning commissioners, that focusing on the needs of individual neighborhoods during the master plan process is really important because one size may not fit all when it comes to housing or really any other land use consideration. So with that, I'm interested in any questions or discussion so that they can help move this process forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the presenters?
I have some point here. First of all, I mean, that oversupply of three bedroom houses, that's not really so much an issue in the city because most of our big houses have been divided up. Would you agree with that?
You know, a divided up house would show up in the data as, it would show up as a three plus bedroom. But I think that does make, that's a good point, especially in particular neighborhoods where, you know, a family or a household that has a few extra people in it, maybe it's multi-generational, maybe looking around saying, what happened to all those big houses? Why are they all one bedroom apartments, you know, divided one now?
The second part about that is we are looking at something called small houses. Have you looked at that as a future development at all?
I think there is a place in the market for that in terms of allowing, creating a potentially attainably priced housing unit for a small household. I don't think, I think, so I think it's a niche that's worth exploring. It's something that planning and zoning documents should definitely account for. But I don't think it's the solution or some sort of panacea, right? Because we're going to see households that need more space than that.
I concur. I just think that some of the households, especially the seniors, may well be perfect for, for the small mini houses type thing. And the master plan will anticipate places where they might be appropriate and things of that nature.
I agree, and I think that that's something the master plan should make sure to do. That's something that has to be intentionally done in a master plan because as you, most zoning ordinances, and I haven't gone through yours in a lot of detail, but most zoning ordinances either don't envision that type of housing or outright prohibit it. So I think that's something that has to be intentionally planned for, so that is important.
Good, thank you. I'm going to shift gears a little bit. And you mentioned the idea of parking, I think it was yours or your, was it the earlier one? I can't keep them up. Was it your presentation talked about housing? No, I'm sorry, parking and vehicles and so on?
Yes, Mayor, yes.
Okay. The reason I'm bringing that up is because we clearly are anticipating electric vehicle and autonomous vehicle uses to increase substantial the next 10 to 20, 30 years, which will change how we use our streets and how we use parking and how we use drop off and pickup. Presumably that will mean a lot less need for a single driver to be able to park his vehicle or her vehicle, you know, and go to work for eight hours and then come back. It will very likely require both pickup and drop off locations along the streets or closer to buildings where we don't have them now. And it will also require, if you have autonomous vehicles that are not in use, they'll need a place to store themselves until the next demand. How are you addressing that, are you, is that something that is being looked at in the master plan? Charging stations is another part of the whole scenario.
Sure. Yeah, good questions, Mayor. And we have not begun the parking study, but we do anticipate addressing questions like that. We certainly have to consider technological change and how that could potentially transform, as you had say, as you say, transform how we get around. And yeah, I will make a note of that. And we will work with the group that's working on the parking study to make sure we address that. Part of it, you know, one of the things as a planner that I think about when it comes time to prognosticate about the future or predict the future is, you know, it's like, when does that autonomous vehicle future come upon us? And so I'm just sharing that thought with you is that I do think about those issues you just addressed. And to me, it's a question of when. I struggle personally with the whole deployment of technology so that it's safe and it's actually a smart system and it can actually do what we're all thinking it could do today for the future. So all good questions, all good considerations.
Two more. All right. What about walkability, pedestrian amenities? Many new, many cities that are trying to develop for the future are looking at just five, 10, 15 years down the road, the 20 and 30 and 40 and 50. And they're trying to separate pedestrians more from the traffic and to use sidewalk amenities, setbacks of buildings, a little bit further to widen park, to widen sidewalks, things of that nature. Will this also include those issues, those possibilities? Because if we want people to be in our downtown areas, they've got to want to come there. And it's got to be an area that's very attractive and that has the kind of amenities, whether that's a area where your restaurants can have outside seating or if it's benches for pedestrians or rest at or flower, large flower areas, things, whatever it might be. Are we willing to look into those as future amenities for walkability?
Yes. We are looking at the non-motorized version of transportation in the transportation study, looking at, you know, pedestrians and bicycle mobility. Everything that you just talked about is up for consideration, sidewalks to bike lanes. You know, in terms of, that's the transportation, non-motorized transportation side of things. The other part, I think, if I could just, the latter part was how do we make traditional sites, like in the downtown area that are, you know, essentially zero lot line construction from decades ago? How do we open that up for increased outdoor space and additional distancing? That's, again, that's something to look at when we look at the complete street from right away edge to right away edge to include, you know, lanes for traffic, bicycles and pedestrians. And then how does that pad or that space for the private enterprise interact? And I think we can come up in the master plan with recommendations and policy objectives that address what you just shared with us.
I think that's important, both because of the EV and AV issue. If more and more people shift to one-time use to get someplace downtown, Old Town, different areas, they'll need to be able to walk, they aren't looking to park their car, they're looking for space and reasons to stay there. We have, we are actually in a good situation how to plan for this because we have so many vacant areas downtown and in Old Town that new buildings could be designed or could be required to plan for these kinds of amenities. Whether that's they put them in or at least they do a setback that's far enough to widen those areas. Many cities that are developing these things are doing exactly that kind of development. They're setting the buildings back, they're leaving space for pedestrians and for amenities. So I really think the zoning may need to be looked at too, to require some changes there.
Agreed. I think the master plan is the most appropriate place to list out potential zoning ordinance changes. And what you just mentioned is if there were to be a list or a matrix of potential changes, I think that would fit in with the master plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, see, I have a, I have a couple of questions. One of, I guess my biggest concern has always been, we have area town that's called the Green Zone. Christopher, talk about the changes and how houses were not populated. And I also see when you did, not you, but the other young lady, and I forgot her name, so I apologize, charge to my head, not to my heart. She spoke about, the people that she spoke to, the stakeholders. If you spoke to the stakeholders, we have housing where we could change revenue into some money-making venture. Especially in that Green Zone area, they just went through and renovated and built these new homes. But the people out there are just renting, they're not allowed to buy the homes. I guess for me, I mean, it's always bothered me and it will continue to until we do something about it, is that we have families, generation, who are not going to move out of the area town. They pay their bills on time, they do everything like us normal people, but they're not allowed to get service. Now, when you talk about putting housing, part of the reason why we don't have a population spurs is because, let's be honest, the baby boomers don't want babies, okay? I got one. He had one, two kids and he said, I wish I'd known what I knew now, I would have never had none. So the young generation or our millennials, they're not multiplying like that. So we can forget four, five bedroom houses again. And I guess my concern is that I really would, I really want to lift the Green Zone stuff. I mean, Bob, you and Cassie, Cassie, you know, I have been so hard on that one. People are living in an area that, and you talk about making Saginaw pretty. I can remember back in the day when that area was pretty. It may not have been what people coming in knew about. And if you didn't come over and visit the east side, you didn't know what was going on over there. So I guess for me, I'd like to know what the plan is. What is the plan? I mean, I know you talk about housing. No, maybe we don't need any housing. Maybe we just need to, like you said, fix up some of the houses we got in best. So if we're going to do that, is that going to be a part of the master plan or what are we doing? Because I have, I was raised at 1335 Norman. The house is still there. It's a family house. And another family member lives in it. The house I live in now, I'm on the east side. We've been in this house, I'm 65. I've been in this house my whole life, except for when I moved out and got married, but I'm back. And so just saying, yes, most of our houses are over 50 years old. Let's be honest, they are. And so with this new master plan, is it going to allow an opportunity for people to stay where they're comfortable? I mean, I don't mind going on Norman Street because we cut the grass. We don't wait for somebody to cut grass next door. So you're right, we turned out over 900 houses in the city of Saginaw on the east side. So when you talk about population and you talk about numbers, let's be real, you don't have, like I told the citizen, our numbers are low because if you take a drive through the east side, which I'm sure you guys have done, we don't have housing. So tell me what your plan is for that one.
Yeah. Good questions Brenda.
Don't get quiet now. Don't get quiet now.
Though, those are all, all good questions, Brenda, and they will be addressed as we go through the master plan update process. Um, that's a, we are beginning the master plan update and so we certainly need to consider, uh, you know, where housing goes and other land uses. And so, we want to take a comprehensive, inclusive, uh, approach and, uh, I, I'm making a note of what you're saying and, uh, I thank you. I, I, I don't have an answer what the plan is because we have to engage the public and go through the process with you guys down the road to refine what the goals and objectives of the plan will be. Your input is key and, um, appreciate what you're saying. I, I certainly understand, uh, where you're coming from.
You know, and I, and I truly do appreciate you hearing, but I don't want any more hearing anymore. I would like to see us do some stuff. We talk about it and every time I ask the question in council meetings and when I bring it up, it's taboo. It's not a taboo. I live over here and if you want to get the respect from us that you get on the other side of the bridge, the damn bridge, excuse my French, has always been a problem. It separates our city. And now is the time, you're working on the plan. So, you know what, gentlemen and young lady, I appreciate you. I applaud you. I applaud Cassie, I applaud Robert, but I still want you to take into consideration we have some stuff and we need to stop talking and we need to start doing. Thank you.
That was well said. Thank you.
Any other comments for the presenters?
Actually, um, I, the, the Cicero with McKenna, I just wanted to, um, share the next steps of the housing study. Um, we, I believe, are presenting, um, the document to the Human Planning Commission in the middle of Sag, uh, September. I think that that's, uh, September 16th. And then I believe it's also the intent to, um, get the document in front of city councils. Right now, you know, the mayor is on the planning commission here, so, um, you'll probably be hearing this again. Um, we're working with Robert and, um, Kena Franklin from, um, the, you know, head programs division for those meetings. So, um, you were our first presentation and we thank you very much for listening and can't wait to see what you all come up with, with the master plan.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, thank you, presenters, and moving on to old business. Discussion on shipping containers. Cassie, help me out on this one, would you please?
Bob will probably lead this one.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Robert?
I had some technical difficulties, so I hope, uh, things will go smoother. Um, anyway, uh, this is the, uh, second draft of a proposed zoning ordinance amendment to, uh, regulate cargo shipping containers. Um, during the last scheduled meeting that we had, I received a, a lot of very good suggestions on terms of changes to the language that I had originally proposed. And, uh, I, as a result then, I spent some time, uh, talking to some of the communities, uh, local businesses, um, and others as well to, to get a better understanding of this industry. And so, here are the suggested changes, um, that I am proposing as a result of the input that I received. So, the first of all is, uh, that one of the suggestions was is we take that definition of temporary buildings and portable storage containers and add that section to the definitions as its own reference and not be included within, um, the reference to accessory buildings. Um, some zoning ordinances that I've looked at do include them within that definition of accessory buildings. I, I find this really to be a better way to go, um, with the, with the definition being separated. So, if you have your document for, in front of you, um, that definition is laid out there, um, and, and talks about, uh, portable storage containers considered incidental to construction work or designed or constructed to ship, store, handle bulk goods or items or which are substantially similar, similar to such containers in appearance. And those would include portable office trailers, reusable steel boxes, cargo containers, shipping containers, mods, pods, Conex boxes and similar containers designed for use in parking, ship, uh, shipping and storage of freight articles of goods or commodities. And these are generally capable of being mounted or moved by a truck, trailer, rail car, or loaded on a ship. And temporary building or portable storage containers are permitted as use in all zoning districts for time limits and under an issued permit as specified in accordance with section 15349. And we'll get into that later. Um, the second area that we added was, uh, more of kind of a clarification so that there was no confusion to use, uh, or to consider temporary buildings or portable storage containers as defined, as I just defined it, um, in section 153063, outside storage and parking on residentially zoned and/or used, um, lots. And that has to do with, um, the, the section in, within our zoning ordinance that talks about, um, uh, trailers and things of that nature, um, storing them on, on a site, RV trailers and things of that nature. The third area, um, is adding these structures as a permitted use and make reference to the definition and regulation for use within each of the zoning districts. And so, I would change, um, all of the zoning district's, um, permitted uses to include temporary buildings or portable storage containers as defined in 153.021 and as regulated in 153.491. Um, the fourth one had to do with my discussions with, uh, people in this industry. And so, I, I felt as though we needed to, uh, include the, the sale, um, display, rental or repair of those types of structures within some particular districts. And that had to do with, uh, uh, me discussing these with, um, um, some of the, the businesses that handle these types of equipment, um, or, uh, the, um, structures rather. And, uh, so what I'm suggesting is that we include that, those as permitted uses in the M1 light industrial district under, um, section 153 zoning code, uh, 153 dash 347 as a permitted use after special approval. And in doing so, then that automatically includes those in the permitted uses, um, under the RMU, M1, M2 and M3 districts because those, um, they, those state that, uh, they permit anything that's within the M1. Um, by do, uh, doing it as a special use after special approval, that would give the planning commission, um, review of, of that type of use. And then likewise, it would also allow those who are currently operating that type of a business, um, to be grandfathered in and would not require them to get special approval. The reason why RMU shows up here is because, uh, under the flex zone, subzone, um, urban flex subzone in the RMU, uh, some light industrial is permitted. Um, so the, the language then would end up being, uh, under the, um, 153.347 permitted uses after special approval. A, temporary and portable storage container sales and play, rental and repair of same as defined in 153, uh, point 021 and as regulated under 1534, point 491. And then finally, the, uh, the change would then, um, include this, um, a change to 159.491, which took out the, the wording, uh, construction and put in temporary buildings or portable storage containers, period. And then the following regulations shall apply to temporary buildings for use incidental to construction work and/or temporary portable storage containers as defined in 153.021. It added, um, uh, totally changed, uh, section E under that, um, which had to do with the placement of those structures because we don't want them putting them in the public right of way, um, or, and/or putting them in, uh, between the sidewalk and the curb, um, or a clear vision area. So, we would want to maintain those. So, that, that language would then say placement, no person shall store or place a temporary building or portable storage container upon the public right of way, public property or between the sidewalk and curb within the city. Clear vision area shall be maintained at all times and portable storage containers shall not obstruct the flow of pedestrian or vehicular traffic. And then we added, uh, other requirements, allowed for the following type of structure or use of the follow, following specified duration and required permit. And this is then the table that, uh, indicates under which conditions, um, those structures would be allowed, the duration and then the permit required. And as was, um, put in the zoning ordinance prior to all of these potential changes, um, construction-related temporary buildings was always a use that was permitted, um, for up to a year. So, we would not require a permit under that condition. Secondly, under, um, more commercial zones like B1, A, B2, B3, M1, M2 and M3, uh, temporary portable structure or storage containers would be allowed for, um, 90 days up to two times in, within a 12-month period. And that, it would require a permit. And that would, those are typically used, um, in situations like, for example, um, uh, Rite Aid or, 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 um, department stores or, or various other, um, stores like that where they do seasonal inventory changeovers and they'll, they'll actually put a box in the back of their building and sometimes you don't really even notice it, but they'll put older inventory, uh, or they'll switch out seasonal inventory, um, during that period of time. And those boxes are, are very useful because they're very secure boxes, um, and, and watertight and, um, so, and that, and then the third area would be the temporary portable storage containers within the residential areas. And those would typically be for moving or remodeling and that sort of thing. And you would be allowed to have a box sitting in your driveway, for example, for up to 30 days. And you could renew that three times within a 12-month period, which would also require a permit. So, the, the purpose again is, is, uh, not to punish people for having these things, but, but rather just so that they're not, um, they're, it's, it's a temporary structure. So, do you have any questions of me or any more comments in terms of this?
Bob, I do, if, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Land Floyd.
All right, Bob, I, uh, first of all, I want to say thank you. You took to heart what we talked about last time and these are, these look like they've covered a lot of the questions we had. So, thank you. I, I have to say I will reserve until I get a chance to actually look at the complete ordinance with the changes, but it looks like this is what we needed. I, I, I'm, I don't have any issues with what I see so far.
Mr. Bob, I got a question. This is Brenda. We talked about this last, that, at our last meeting, you're right. And I had a question and so, I just need clarification or understanding. People, some businesses would just be grandfathered in because, uh, because they have them and had them all this time. And correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, most of the businesses that do have them would actually fall within, um, the, the zoning districts that, that allow them, um, as a permitted use, um, under, uh, special approval. So, for example, um, old Georgia, um, has, he's, he is a, a dealer in these types of structures as well as, uh, scientific break over on, um, I think they're on Genesee.
Yeah.
Um, so, those folks would already, um, be allowed to continue on using, um, or, or, continue on being in the business of, uh, dealing in portable shipping containers. So, yes.
Okay, so, so, another question. So, I'm, I'm looking at your timeframe. So, I can, like, if I was rebuilding or a temporary building, you can have it for up to a year. But since we've had this conversation, I'm noticing more and more that they all over the city. So, I understand the rationale for it and, and I do, because I told you, I wanted me one to park my extra car in because it beats door to garage because you can put a whole car in these things. So, I, I guess what I'm asking you again is, is this a plus for us or is this something? Is it a plus for the city? Is it something? Because I know you didn't just take out your time to do this without a need. And so, I'm, I guess I want to know, was there a need for this? Did something come up? Because right now, there's commercials coming out telling people to buy these things and to get these things. And U-Haul is on top of the line for talking about it. They're talking about college students, the pandemic, because families are literally moving families in with them and they are now downsizing their houses. So, I'm seeing more of these, uh, podcasts than I've ever seen in the city. So, what made, I guess my question is, what made you want to do this?
Well, I, I guess my opinion is they're unsightly. Um, I don't think they're appropriate, um, for, uh, storage in, uh, residential areas. I think they're appropriate for, uh, what they were intended and that was for storage on a temporary basis. Um, I think there, there's potential hazards in terms of, um, they're, they're not like a, a, a wooden storage shed, um, in the sense that, uh, they're potentially dangerous if somebody gets locked in one. Um, they're, um, so, I guess what I'm saying is I think that there is a lot of use, use for them. Um, but I think, uh, the intended, uh, the, the uses that I have had people call me, uh, to use them for, I, I don't think they're appropriate, like having it be a stor- storage building in, in their backyard.
Bob, I just wanted to know why because you didn't put a lot of energy into this. So, I just wanted to know why. Thank you so much, sir.
Any other comments from other commission members? If not, I think the next move then is to, I believe, Bob, have you come back to the next meeting with the final draft and amendment to chapter 153 zoning code, correct?
Yeah, I would put this in an ordinance, uh, form, uh, that, uh, we would then also hold a public hearing, um, to take any comments from the public on. Um, and if that were approved, then we would submit that with our recommendation to the city council for approval.
So, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that doesn't require a motion tonight for you to do what you just described, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I'm just looking for some direction. If you would like me to bring that back in the form of a whole-blown ordinance, um, I would be happy to do that, ordinance amendment, rather. in the form of a whole-blown ordinance, um, I would be happy to do that, ordinance amendment, rather.
Got the feeling of the commission? A simple yes would be appropriate.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, very good. You've been charged with the task, Robert.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Item number seven, public comment. Do we have anyone with public comment?
I, if I may, um, Chairman, I, I, um, have been receiving calls during this polit- uh, political, uh, year, um, about political signs out, yeah, in people's yards. And, uh, one of the things that people have asked me is, how far in advance can people put election signs out in the yard? And so, I looked at the county's website, and they actually have a, a chart for all of the cities and villages in terms of the number of days displayed prior to the election, the size requirements, number of days removal after election, um, and any other comments that, uh, the, uh, each jurisdiction may have. So, I'm wondering if you would like us to take a look at, um, the current ordinance regarding, um, election signs, and just to inform you of what the city's ordinance says. There are no, uh, days prior to an election that, um, or a limit on the number of days prior to an election that, um, people can put out political signs. Uh, the maximum size of a sign is thirty-two square feet, which is to kind of give you a perspective. Um, those portable signs that you can change the letters on, that's about a thirty-two square foot, uh, sign. And then, after following the election, uh, you have to remove those at, on seven, at seven days. Most of the jurisdictions within the county, um, removal of signs are, range from, uh, four to, to fifteen days, it looks like. Um, there are twelve jurisdictions that do not have any, uh, number of, to display prior to an election. And then twenty-two, so about two-thirds of the jurisdictions have a thirty-day, um, uh, limit prior to an election. So, I guess my question to you is, are you interested in looking at possibly changing that or keeping it the same?
I, I would note, or I would add, that there was a Supreme, a United States Supreme Court decision, um, a few years ago that, uh, did place some restrictions on any municipality's ability to enact, um, content-related regulations with regard to signage. So, um, that, that would be something that we would have to take a look at as to whether or not, um, regulating the timeframe in which political signs could be out prior to an election, um, if that was even something that was possible, given that Supreme Court decision, because that would effectively be a content-based regulation.
Any comments from the commissioner on this item?
You know, I, I, I'm in politics. This is Brenda, and this is, if, when I first came on city council, I didn't see that as much, and I, we all were told what to do. Since then, Amy is right. People have been putting signs up six months prior, leaving the signs up. I remember, for me, I was always afraid that they were going to pick my signs up and charge me. So, the day of election, I was getting mine out, but so much has changed, Mister Bob, since I've, since I got into this arena. People put signs out five, six months ahead of time. They leave them out. They're not picking them up. They putting signs in people's yards, and the people, they told them they could do it. When they called me and say that they didn't give them permission, I tell them, take the sign and put it in the trash, because you really should ask homeowners, can you put your stuff on their property? You shouldn't just be going around propping stuff in people's yards. Same thing with empty lots. Now, I got a problem with the empty lots. Who is giving them permission to even do that? Now, Amy, that's a question you might want to, you know, you might be able to help us with. Who is giving people for all these empty lots intersections? See, I was told that you couldn't put them on islands, like, right there on Court Street. I was told you can't even put stuff out there, but if you look at election time, they done went crazy. Signs are everywhere. So, that's, that, that's me.
Any other comments?
I would suggest that before we try and draft up an ordinance, we find out from Amy what is feasible. And then, I mean, she's right, there's been a lot of changes, and it may be that it prohibits the kind of change you're looking for, Bob. If there's a window that you could do so, then her input would be important.
Yeah, and please understand, I'm not trying to change anything. It's, that I have received calls in my office regarding that, and I'm throwing this out to you folks, um, to get some direction in terms of if you're interested in, I guess, more so limiting the, the time, the number of days prior to...
I would love it, but I don't know if it's doable, and that's where Amy's, why, why I'm referring to her. All right.
You're freezing up, Mister Robert.
Any other comments on the matter? From, I think, the two people that voiced, uh, opinion, I think that might be something to look into, Robert, and maybe report back on, and see what our flexibility is.
I, I'm not sure if Robert can hear us right now, because it looks like he's, uh, streaming, but I will...
I thought he might have dropped off.
I'll certainly touch base with him, um, following the meeting with regard to what we may or may not be able to do.
Okay, thank you, Cassie. Any other public comment? One more time for good measure. Any other public comment? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move, Brenda.
Second.
All in favor? I, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.